Okay, I'd like to call to order the zoning commission regular meeting for Monday, February 7th, 2022. First order of business is appointment of alternates. I'll be sitting in for the chairman who's away. And so I guess we will appoint Jackie Batos as our alternate for this evening. And welcome her back first day as an alternate, she gets to sit as a, as a full board member. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Know how this works? It's all different now we're on TV. Zoom. All right, the next order of business is approval of minutes of January 3rd, regular meeting and the January 24th special meeting. Anybody have any changes to the January 3rd? Minutes?
I, I read the, I don't have any comments, but I would motion that we approve them as they were submitted.
Okay.
I'll second that. I'll second.
That was Ann? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And abstain?
And one, what are you doing? You're abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so it's five to one. All right, the next one is the January 24th special meeting.
Well, I'll offer the same thing. I read those two. I don't have any comment on those and I will, I'll motion that we approve them as they were submitted.
And I'll second that.
Okay, same and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, in what absence?
Yep.
So we're five to one again. Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, old business. First application is application 2127 of SL Simsbury LLC applicant TJ Donahue. Agent is, I didn't see TJ, is he here?
Yeah.
No? All right, well, let's see if he shows up later. And then the next application, 2130.
There's, there was just somebody on the screen from Silverman. Right there, Jimmy Constant, take us.
Yep. Jimmy, are you doing the presentation or do, are we waiting for TJ?
Actually TJ is doing it, but I think he sent a wrong invite out for 7:30 and I see Rod on the screen. He's going to call him and tell him it's actually seven.
Should we amend the agenda?
Yeah, let's just amend it, we'll just amend it to, to do that at the end of the old business, I guess. Okay. The next application is 2130 of Dorset Crossing and staff tells us that they, they are not prepared to do their meeting tonight. So we won't address that one either. So the next one is application 2129 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission and they apparently are present tonight.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to table 2130? Or no?
No, because it was postponed by the applicant.
Okay.
All right, so 2129. Which is text amendments for the purpose of establishing short-term rentals in the use.
Mr. Chair, we've actually finished the public hearing portion of that, so you can actually move on to the next one. It'll show up again in deliberations. The public hearing was closed.
And this is applications, it's not even in the public hearing court.
Yes, it's again on the, in the agenda. We'll have to go over the agenda a little bit closer next time. We still are working with staff. We have new staff involved.
They're all learning. Although Joe did a very good job because we didn't have any changes to the minutes, so we will note that.
That's true.
All right, then we'll go. So still no one know one from TJ. Okay. All right, well, we'll move into public hearings. First one is application 2203 of the Simsbury Public Schools. Carol Jason Casey, applicant, SLR International Corporation Agent, Special Exception and Site Plan Amendment pursuant to Section 3.4 and 6 of the Simsbury Zoning Regulation for Development in the Flood Plane related to the reconstruction of the existing grandstand and press box for the property located at 34 Farms Village Road, assessors map F11, lot 148, lot 016, zone R40. And that's where we had somebody, Kevin was here.
That's me. Well, good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Kevin Fusiliere. I'm a principal landscape architect with SLR International Corporation, formerly known as Mylona McBroom. We've done a lot of work with the, the town of Simsbury. I'm here on behalf of Simsbury Public Schools this evening to present the grandstand and press box replacement project. If I can, I'll share my screen. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation I'll go through and then open it up for questions and discussion. All right, so let me just pop that up. Right. So now I'm just now going to figure out how to share my screen. All right, does everyone see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
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 All right.
So I introduced myself already. Thank you for having me here. The project, let's see, are you guys seeing a split screen? I might be able to switch that. Is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what you see is the Simsbury High School campus at 34 Farms Village Road. The area of proposed improvements is along the western property line. It's the replacement of the existing grandstand and press box that served the running track in synthetic turf of the primary competition field for the high school. Just zoom in bird's eye here. I've dashed in the approximate property line. And behind that, to the west is Hopbrook and that's the, the floodplain that this project is associated with. The existing grandstand and press box were constructed in the late 60s, I believe. There's a bunch of them. They're, they're definitely outdated. There's a small shed that's part of this project that will be removed. It's no longer being utilized by the school. What you can't see is an existing CMU storage building beneath the substructure of the grandstands. After discussions and meetings with ZBA to meet, to accommodate their requests, we agreed to remove that building to allow for a different configuration of the new grandstand. You can see these are just pictures of the existing grandstand and press box. There's various non-code compliant issues with the structure and I'll go over those in more detail. It's sort of an outdated substructure with many footings and vertical supports. And then you can see this concrete storage building. We originally were hoping to keep it and build a new grandstand over it, but that posed numerous challenges, which I'll go over. So the school has agreed to let go of that structure, which is good for the floodplain. And the new structure will be fully opened underneath with just chain link fence enclosing it. So why does Simsbury High School need to replace the grandstand and press box? As mentioned, the grandstand's not up to current ADA, Americans with Disability Acts and state building codes. There's insufficient means of egress for the number of seats. The access ramps exceed ADA allowable pitch. There's insufficient, nonexistent ADA and companion seating areas. There's inadequate fall protection on some of the railings and there's not, there's no handrails on the stairs. Additionally, the existing grandstand and press box are undersized for the school and spectators. However, we're not increasing the size greatly. And then with the ZBA, we looked at other locations to accommodate the facility. And without rebuilding, relocating the track and field, this is really the only location for it. These are just some pictures of, you know, how crowded it can, the grandstands can get during a game and how tight and crammed the press box gets. So we have received local approvals so far. Conservation Commission, Inland Wetlands, Water Course Agency on October 5th. That was approval to conduct regulated activities in the upland review area for the, for Hopbrook. And then zoning board of appeals in December 23rd, 2001. Variance was approved to construct a new grandstand and press box within the side yard setback. The existing structure was non-conforming, being about at its closest point, 21.7 feet away from the, the property line. After a couple of meetings with the ZBA, we came up with a proposed configuration that maintains that non-conformity. And while we maintain it, it used to be seating in the press box that were, were close to the property line. We've actually pulled everything a little further away and only the access platform for the new press box maintains that 21.7 feet of, of separation. We also agreed with ZBA and the closest butter neighboring property on Weldon Way to provide some supplemental buffer landscaping to replace vegetation that was damaged by fallen trees. So the proposed improvements, we're increasing the seating capacity to 1,082. The current capacity, well, not exactly known is around 900. The existing concrete storage building will be removed to permit a lower height grandstand and press box, as well as move seating further from the property line. The setback from the property line maintains the closest point at 21.7. As mentioned, at the northern landing for the press box, the new grandstand will have ADA compliant ramps, building code compliant number of egress points. It will also have the ADA compliant number of seating and with companionship. The top rail at the grandstand will be six feet tall and will have privacy screens. And the under story of the structure, as mentioned, will be enclosed with securable chain link fencing and gates. So the substructure can be used for storage of weatherproof equipment. So this is just what's getting removed. It's the entire structure, the, the shed as mentioned. Asphalt pavement that is beneath and inside the structure. And we show kind of the non-conformities that exist with, within the 40-foot building setback. So the existing conditions is just an elevation showing everything to be removed. This graphic represents the new grandstand structure along with the dashed in red, all the items to be removed, all the existing features. There is new concrete paving associated with the ramps and the stairs. We do have an increase of about 300 square feet of impervious surface with this new footprint, which represents a thousandth of a percent acreage coverage. As mentioned, the new structure is getting lower and moving closer, a little bit closer to the track and a little bit further from the property line in the rear. Again, the existing outline in red on the graphic. And, okay, now that, that's my presentation. I'd be happy to go back to any of the images. I can pull up some of the, the drawings that we submitted with the application package or we can just open it to questions.
Well, I got the first question for you. I see with the removal of that shed, I don't see another one being proposed or, you know, counted for in the plan.
Yeah, at, at this time, the only, there is no new structure being proposed. We understand if the school ever desired to put one back. Hopefully they would choose a location outside the, the building setback. What would be more of a challenge is putting it outside the floodplain since this whole western half of the campus does fall within a FEMA floodplain. As mentioned, they currently don't use that shed. It would be blocked behind the proposed access ramp. So the, from the beginning, that shed was to go away and not be replaced.
I should have asked a different question. And my question really is, where are they going to sell refreshments? I don't see a provision for that.
Now, I don't know if Jeff Penny, the athletic director, was able to join us. I'm just going to stop sharing for a second so I can see. Is it Jeff? Jeff was going to be on. I believe they just set up tables is what Jeff has mentioned to ZBA. And they sell concessions that way and they've been perfectly happy with that. Again, I'm not to say that they're not going to be back in front of you in a year from now or more or less asking for a new structure, but at this time, they're, they're perfectly on board with what we're proposing.
It's funny, actually, Bruce, because I was going to ask the same thing because when my son played rugby, we did the team dinners in that shed every, after every game. So somebody was using it, but again, that's, it's outside of scope with this. I was just kind of curious if maybe there was anything underneath the structure. But that, I think it's just, doesn't sound like the case.
Part of the ZBA, we did, again, we, we had some meetings with the neighbor that had the most concerns, the closest to butter. And one thing that we, we agreed to and made sure the plan showed that behind and beneath the structure, basically they're going to be off limits to spectators and kids and fans. So they can retain some of their privacy. That was a, a big point and, and we did have multiple meetings with the ZBA to come to that agreement. And so the whole backside will be off limits. I know this school has other plans in the future for field buildings and, and storage. And again, that would be a separate project.
I just have one other question because that does lead in. My other, other question was, were there any issue? I know that there are, there's got to be some issues with the neighbors being so close anyway, but were there any objections to the changes? It seems to me that it's all improvements.
Well, when we, when we went to ZBA first, we, we did go with a larger footprint that had three additional rows on the top of the grandstand. And there, there did have concerns. They said, you know, people could peer over and look in their kitchen window at night. And with the loss of some of the vegetation that's been damaged over the years, they were very concerned about privacy. So we reduced the size of the bleacher, not only to accommodate them, but to not make the non-conformity any worse than it already was in the setback. But then we also agreed to raise that back railing six feet and put a privacy screen on it, which they were very happy with that decision.
Cool. Great. Thank you.
No problem.
Well, when I'm over there in the fall at the football games with my friends from the American Legion and the VFW and we raised the flag before the football games, I'll just have to bring my own hot dogs with me, I guess.
Again, I, I wish Jeff Penny, the athletic director, was on. He, he can speak more to the, the, the event management over there, but I'm sure he has some plans.
Well, if I have a sleepless night, I'll, I'll look for that on SCTV and watch the replay of the DRB meeting. Your ZBA, excuse me.
I think, I think this is a good plan and much needed. And doubling the, doubling the size is excellent.
We're doubling the size of the press box. Now, the grandstands are only being increased by so much, partially budget driven.
And did you, um, did you say that there is going to be some additional planting that's going on with this or?
Yeah, that's shown on the landscape plan. There, there's a, or on the site plan. It's, there's a small section. I want to say it's about 20 feet in length along the, the, there's a fence on the property that the school installed not too long ago to provide more privacy for the neighbors. And that has a privacy screen, but there's a section of the arborvitae hedge where a large pine had fallen over and broke, I want to say about eight of the existing arborvitae edge. So we're going to go back and plant, we're going to remove the stumps in the, the broken trees and in that section plant, I believe it's five new arborvitae. Western arborvitae, which are deer resistant and a larger growing variety to match. The neighbors know that at installation, it's going to be, you know, eight foot tall plantings, but over time they'll reestablish their privacy.
Anybody else?
I, I would just want to comment that I'm, I'm delighted that it's going to finally be ADA compliant. People who go to the stands, whether it's for games or for whatever events, many of them have grandparents. Some of the kids are handicapped. Some of the parents are handicapped and I think it's well worthwhile to make sure that everybody is safe and that they were following the government guidelines. So I'm delighted.
Okay, is that it for commissioners? Anybody from the public? Okay, back to the commissioners. Anybody for last comment? Can't see everybody. All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm making a more of a positive hearing.
All right, we got that from Donna in a second.
Yeah. Diane seconded. Yeah.
And second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. All right, moving on to the next public.
Commissioner, would you like to go back to TJ for earlier in there now that he's present because staff is the rest of the applications?
Oh, they are? Okay. All right, that's a good idea. Thank you. All right, so we'll go back to old business and application 2127 of SL Simsbury LLC applicant TJ Donahue is agent. TJ?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I apologize for being light. Technology can be very humbling and I was unable to get to the starting line on time today. Thank you for taking up my application. This is a request for a site plan approval under the Hartford Form Based Code for property at Talcut Ridge. With us tonight is Jeff Rowding, AIA Architects, who prepared the plan. And we've been before you several times informally to discuss some modification of uses at the Talcut Ridge. This application would allow us to construct an 8,750 square foot building to contain 15 residential one-bedroom units in place of the previously approved 8,000 square foot commercial space. We reiterate again and have talked to you before about the failure of the, of the market to, to sustain or, or to allow us to make an investment for a commercial space there. Our prior representation of the market failure of commercial structures, which are not in the town center or North Simsbury Commercial Area or on Route 44 remains true. In that context, the apartment market is robust and the one-bedroom apartment market is underserved. We respectfully request approval of our site plan, which is in effect a modification of the existing approved plan. Please note, the proposed alternate structure is less than 10% larger than the existing approved building. The height of the structure is identical. The design features are the same as used throughout the development, including colored materials and roof breaks. The owner is Silverman Group, of which the town is now very familiar as a major, major taxpayer, which is not simply a developer, but also an investor and proceeds to complete this phase of its rigid Talcut as a long-hold investor and real estate manager. Your file includes the application and all of the submitted materials. It also includes a staff report dated February 2nd, 2022, and we've reviewed that and, and agree with all aspects and findings of it. Today, we supplementally provided information concerning the parking table and compliance with all requirements. And I think your staff will note that that was received. Jeff Rawlings will discuss the possible future conversion, the first floor to commercial use, and he will present the, the application now to you. Jeff Rowling is with us and also Jim Konstatakis from Silverman Group is with us this evening on this call.
Good evening. Jeff Rowling is posing as Brian Cooney because he's on Brian's computer at work. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, Brian's, Brian's computer works, but mine didn't.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I too have some technical problems, but thank you TJ. If I could share the screen, that would be great. I believe, did it come up?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I believe, I believe this is in your submission package. As TJ said, we're, we're looking to do a, a 15-unit building here. We originally had the design modeled after a farm barn, which wasn't, although it was created, it wasn't received all that well because it was a smaller structure than what we proposed here. It was another floor. We, we took some guidance from your designing committee and went back and redesigned the building such that we kept it in character with the original approvals that we received for what would have been the commercial building on this parcel. The, the footprint of the building compared to our last application, the barn building got a little bigger because as you can imagine, we're now fitting 15 units on two floors versus 15 units on two floors. So it's spread out slightly. But basically the overall square footage internally is the same as what we're posing last go around. One of the, the things that TJ had mentioned is that all the materials, although I, I, I will caveat this. The rendering colors are not really coming in on my screen too great, but these, these colors are meant to be identical to what's happening in the major portion of the project behind this. So if you see a color that resembles closely to one of the other colors in the project, you can be assured that was the intent. And that is the intent going forward is that we will match those on this building and, and to the, to the balance of the site. So what we did was we created a building that has a, a central corridor with rooms with units facing pretty much all directions and all four directions. Primary entrances to the building would be on the short ends, one closest to the parking lane and one closer to the boulevard side. I can, I'll take you around the corner of the building slightly. You can see we've, we've broken up the elevation quite a bit with, with the Gary Roof Lines. One of the comments we just received from the review board was that they thought the roof was a little too high, but quite frankly, I think it's more my renderings are too high because we're looking at, at roof plane here. We, we took a lot of care to bring down some of the eve lines along the, along the roof elevation. Let me go back to the first elevation here. You can see that the, the normal eve height is up by the top of these dormers and we brought the roof down as, as far as we thought possible and still make functional space in the center core here. The, most of the, the objection to the height of the roof is based upon the fact that these are, this is a deep unit. It's, it's really two units back to back. So this truss roof here has to cover a lot of ground. So it does get up a little higher. Suffice to say, it's a, it's a lower plane. So when you're at eye level, you really don't perceive this. So I, I think there, you know, the, the comment and that, the one or two negative comments we got at the design review. I think we're a little over, overstated because this is, this is really more the elevation that you're going to see when you're at street level and then you can see that selectively the roof is, is very, very. This last photo kind of, it's photos superposes the building footprint on the left-hand side of the boulevard going in. This is the retail component on the right and then here's our building on the left. It was designed basically to mirror the massing of the other building. It's, it's approximately the same height as that building. As, as TJ said, it's the same height as the original commercial building that was proposed there. One other thing I should mention is that, you know, we did take it on high to eventually, if needed, if, if the market turned, to be able to put this lower level into retail. There's, there's entrances proposed on the end, as I said, but easily we could take storefronts such as these windows here and these windows here. And even combining these windows to break this up into a multiple tenant retail establishment or a professional office, you know, a bank or something in here without too much effort with modifying the structure. So that's the intent is to make this a flexible building and, and, you know, be market driven. And I, I think hopefully you'll see that we, we've accomplished that. The the basic height to the mean height of the, the roof is 34 foot six inches, which is well within your, your organs requirements. I guess that's my, my direct testimony. I'd be happy to answer any questions relative to the architecture.
The commissioners?
I'm, I'm kind of curious, um, could you kind of talk to me a little bit more about how you say you, you reserve the rider? You're, you're, you're open to potentially putting retail in there in the future? Like what would compel you? What, what would? I mean, at this point, I get the impression that you feel that there's, there is no retail. So what, what were your, what are your thoughts on that little clause? I'm just, I'm a little confused by that. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was reacting to the comments of the design review board. There was a couple of proponents of, of retail that were essentially saying they didn't want to see this building without retail. And so we assured them that we could design something if the, a market-driven circumstance came up that we needed to put retail in here or wanted to put retail in here, we could physically do it. So it wasn't, it wasn't in reaction to a need for retail. We don't feel there's a need for, we don't feel there's a market for retail. We, that's why we're before you for the residential conversion, but we wanted to at least reassure the design board that there, you know, there, there would be a possibility. We, that's why we're for you for the residential version, but we wanted to at least reassure the design board that there, you know, there there would be a possibility. Everything changes down the road that potentially this could be.
I mean, I would tell I just, I'll just go on record to say that I would agree. I'm I'm still pretty disappointed that we don't have any retail there. So that's why I was just a little confused about the the wording. So thanks for clarifying.
I would I would agree with you on that point, though. I mean, we have a mixed use development that had a lot of planning and thought and discussion that went into it. I mean, we've even in past meetings gotten to the point where we wanted to restrict a number of residential units built and occupied before we and then had the retail built out because we've had an issue with the retail never getting built out. I understand that the market isn't there right now, but we have a similar issue going on possibly in the north of the town. And I mean, if we if we have mixed use developments that don't ever get the mixed use. I mean, I just wonder where the strength is in even planning them. So I'm kind of torn. It's a beautiful building. I understand the need. Now you have one commercial parcel, though, that's just kind of sitting over there. And I mean, are we to expect that to be converted to is is a question, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable. So yeah, I'm a little torn with with the the commercial aspect going away. Beautiful building, though.
And this building, this development does have requirements that before they get all their COs, they gotta have the the commercial built out.
But we're getting, but.
They needed shelled, Kevin.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's all we did, but.
Right. And this is one of those, this is one of those commercials buildings, so.
Yeah, so I think we would have to change that as well. That we had a limitation on how many COs they could get without building the the commercial.
It's nine, well, it's ninety percent of the COs can be issued before the two commercial buildings are fully shelled. Now, if the two commercial buildings are never fully shelled, then they can never issue those final ten percent, which is, you know, I I don't know, somebody from Silverman probably has accurate count, but it seems to me there's there's going to be thirty units at issue. That won't be able to eligible for COs if both these units aren't shelled as they were approved. Not this, the approved commercial buildings.
I'd like to ask about the comments made about the market not being there for commercial. Just to speak on in Simsbury alone, in the past year and a half, we've had a sandwich shop go in, a coffee place go in, a bank go in. A smoothie place come in, a juice bar, a Mexican restaurant, a Cajun restaurant, a dress shop. So I would love to hear more about what market because we have we have places coming to Simsbury.
That would be a question for the architect, deferred to our professionals.
If I may respond to that, Jimmy Konstantakis with the Silverman Group. Jackie.
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing us tonight. So I will speak on the retail component. We have just adjacent to this proposal requested modification. So the retail component we have there, we spent half a million dollars thus far. We have offered six different users. I know you've brought out a few of the incoming users there. We've looked at several of these. Some of them are also transplants within the the grounds or Simsbury or Wheatog. They're not, they're not coming. They're not new businesses. I'm not saying not all of them, but rather some of them are not new business, rather relocations for more competitive rates. I will speak on our parcel here. We have worked with six to seven different users, lowered the market rate by thirty-five to forty percent. And went in as a total loss and still have failed to achieve a retail component there. Till today, we are still marketing it. We've changed three different, yeah, retail brokerage firms to assist and till today, we do not have a lease out there with grand total TIs in excess than we've ever did in any retail component we own. So we're baffled by that. And that is one of the main drivers where we scratch our head and say, where is the retail in this market? We certainly have an obligation here from the initial master plan, but that obligation that we're bringing forward our concerns here to see if we can make a change. We will continue marketing that. We have no intention of changing that to any form of residential or livable space and hope to have a user there soon as it's been vacant now for almost two years.
Yeah, I would also express that I'm not happy losing the the commercial aspect of this because I was actually the one that insisted when we did the original plan here that it have at least two uses. And so I'm not ready to give up on that. What I would suggest if you if there if I were going to compromise is that you do build this with the commercial on the ground floor. If you insist that, you know, we have to have apartments in that building is to put the apartments on the second floor and at least build out commercial on the first floor. Rather than build the the residential and someday it's going to get converted to commercial. I don't think that will ever happen. And I think we would be fooling ourselves if we thought that would ever happen. So I would do it the reverse and say, you know, build the bottom as as commercial and at the top, this, you know, second floor is some residential, if you'd like, as another possibility. Anybody else? Bruce, you got comments?
Yeah, I I had a couple of things I wanted to interject and one is along those lines that with the frequent references, this notion of retail or something in that, you know, in the subheading from below, commercial. And the fact is that the zone itself defines and in the form of illustration, many different types of commercial uses. That I never hear mentioned, one of which is daycare, but we don't know what they already showed it to and had near misses maybe. I don't know, but I mean, I don't, I don't, the only thing I I want want to take the architects or the developers' time on is the visual of the mountain from here. I've gotten since the day this project started or went into vertical framing, I've had complaints, not, it's not just the people at the I mean, it's really people driving by neighbors and everybody who are dissatisfied with the compromise of the view of the ridgeline by the height of the buildings and the proximity to the road. And, you know, I guess we deserve a pat on the back for not making it worse. You know, if we say we can build this building, they said this one is only a little bit taller than the one that's next to it. I know I'm not in favor of making our, you know, our issue with the neighbors and the passersby and the residents of Simsbury worse with a, you know, further erosion potentially of the of the visual of the mountain as you pass by. I'm also, you know, I've said this before, but I get so frequent a disordered maddening comments from people who, you know, you could say they don't understand the market, but people do not understand why all the apartments are getting built in Simsbury. And, you know, if they would look around, it's it's happening in other towns too, but we have some choices to make here and I think that, I mean, the the essence I get from this is that what's happened is the commercial market or the opportunity for what we have labeled as commercial buildings, these two buildings. The opportunity for, in in essence, return on investment is not what it was, you know, when the buildings were proposed. It's less for the commercial and maybe significantly less than for apartments. But I I don't think that justifies, you know, taking, you know, you know, what's the next space and the next space and the next space. Instead of doing something with commercial in a way that works, we build apartments. I don't think that's in the long term interest of the residents of Simsbury and I'm I'm not in favor of doing that. So my other thought is I, I'm not sure that we're all tuned to the fact that, you know, there's a whole array of reasons for zoning regulations and you know, there's, I not too long ago came across, I was looking back at the state regulations that circumscribed what we do in zoning. And I came across the note following a section eight dash two D. There's a note that points out, it's really case law rather than legislative law, but it says the maximum possible enrichment of developers is not a controlling purpose for zoning. So for a developer to come to us with a proposal, we approve it and then two years later they come back and say, well, we can't do this. We're not going to do it. We can't make as much money. We don't want to do it. We want you to give us something that you wouldn't have given us two years ago. Three years ago when it was originally approved. That's my interpretation. I wasn't at the meetings when it was originally approved. But I don't think the fact that, you know, they're at risk financially. I'm sympathetic, but it doesn't move me to concede what I think are the long term best interests of the town, which is to have commercial and residential in a mixed use area. I've heard for, you know, I started in zoning in two thousand and seven. And for two years before that, when there was proposal and discussion of a giant development about a mile south of there down a Route ten budding the eve on town line, it was all about, we need mixed use so we can have, we want to live and work and play in the same area and that will cause growth to happen, live, work and play. And now we have, you know, prime real estate in in Simsbury being committed nearly entirely. And if we left it to the developer, it would be entirely residential, no work. And there's a swimming pool there, so and a walking trail. So I guess there's some play, but you know, I I don't have any questions for the the developer that haven't been spoken to already. I get it, but when we come to further discussion, right now, we're just trying to settle on, do we know what we're gonna, we need to know.
Anne or Diane, you got anything?
Um, no, I think I I think I'm, I think question wise, all my questions have been answered. So I I I agree with what everybody's saying. I know, again, same thing. I am sympathetic, but I'm not compelled. I don't know, but we can talk about it more.
Is is there any data that was overlooked that was intended to be presented or referenced related to the impact on the schools for these apartments? I know TJ had told us in past presentations that the plan, now my point is just the plan is the parcel, the south parcel is in all likelihood, I think, was sort of the, you know, the inference of what you said, that presentation, when it comes maybe not too far down the road, it's going to be all about residential. That's not going to be commercial at all. And so we're going to have to answer these questions about what's going on in the school systems and it doesn't mean that it's the Silverman Group's fault, but the zoning commission, I think we're going to have to answer some questions about, you know, are we going to be able to do it for for.
I think you better understand that. I think you better understand that. I think you better understand the ratable this is and the impact that you have. And this is a breach of faith with the developer and I understand neighbors complain and stuff like that, but the Silvermans embrace this project. We've been at it for ten years. They wanted to partner with the town of Simsbury and bring something forward that was positive, that was valuable. And, you know, there's no value to retail on that site. And Bruce, you're right. They the Conover tried to put a major development there and it wouldn't have been successful. The world has changed on that. Amazon has changed it. Everything's changed. Jackie is right that they're they're successful business. They're coming to Simsbury. They all cluster. They want to be in the center of Simsbury, which is a good place for them. The north is Simsbury on Route forty-four. And the only other thing that's been successful is Cumberland Farms. I mean, that's the nature of where it is, but we want to continue with dialogue with you, but I I'm not anxious for my meeting tomorrow with the Silvermans. They they've honored every commitment. They've honored every everything they said they do. They're the second largest taxpayer in Simsbury. They're not someone who builds apartments and flips them. They own them and they stay there and they stay the course and they're committed. And that this discussion tonight, the discussion we had, I don't get it. It's it's a total breach of all the dialogue that we've had with you. And, you know, you're the zoning commission and we'll continue to try to work with you, I suppose, but but you're not looking at the economics of it. You're not giving, and the school question. The town planning department has records. These things are net moneymakers for the town. The number of students coming out of these things does not even begin to approach the revenue that the town makes from the from the vehicles and from the apartments as taxpayers. So I I don't want to get preachy and that, you know, I respect you all, but.
Well, you passed that already, but I think that the issue is there needs to be some confronting of whatever the facts are. Because what we keep hearing is that Vladimir Lane School's bursting at the seams. There's going to be additions and remodeling and what are we going to do with all these new kids? I I don't know what the facts are and I don't know what the answers are, but I'm not aware of planning.
Are you suggesting we should study? We'll do anything you want. We'll give you school study. We'll give you an economic study.
Can we stick to this application, though?
Right.
Thank you. So TJ, I was here, as you know, when this was approved and it was approved as mixed use. And so, please, again, I wasn't here for the past, you know, discussion on zoning this year. But I know how this was approved and Silverman has not met that. We asked for two commercial buildings. There are no commercial uses there right now.
We we together committed to two commercial buildings. I don't know if you heard Jimmy Konstantakis talk about his efforts. He's in charge at Silverman of the leasing out of these retail facilities. There is no market for retail at that site and they have high terms. As a representative, I I I I don't know.
How is there no market with three hundred residents?
Uh, well, we'll respond to that question with in a concise way with the written formula, but it's naive to think that three hundred residents can sustain a building in eight thousand square foot retail building that's.
And the commercial across the street and the park across the street, not just that alone, but three hundred residents is a pretty good start.
If you say so. I mean, if you know that, then you know that you're a real estate.
I am.
That's the number of units, Jackie, not the number of residents. And that doesn't include the.
Okay.
So I have to agree with Jackie that I don't see that we've breached this at all. We've been very accommodating for the Silvermans as they've come through and changed the residential component of this. But I think we, you know, we're within our rights to stick to our guns and we want some commercial. This is prime property. This is the major road in Simsbury and we should have some commercial along it. Not just, you know, nice flat land should not just become residential property. All right, anybody else got any comments or should we move on here?
I'll make the comment. It's certainly disappointing to know the position and the remarks. We invested a lot of money in in the ridge of Talcott Mountain. We thought we brought a great community, great residents, children of all backgrounds and it's disappointing. It seems like the largest, the second largest taxpayer at Simsbury here is being again treated and misled. We thought we did well with the town and the relationship we have, but it seems like certain parties in the town rather see vacant retail components instead of occupied apartments. It is very disappointing and we will scratch our head to see which direction we go on investing or reinvesting with Simsbury. We are long time holders. We don't sell, but I will not put our money where a town shoots down a development like this. Thank you.
We appreciate your threat.
Just again, I don't want to, I I hear what you said, I and I take it for for that, but we we're not limiting this to retail. You could put daycare in there. You could put professional offices. You could put doctors and nurses in here. You could put a whole array of different things, you know, donut shops. I mean, I don't, I, you know, there's a wide array that's not just as limited as what we keep going back to. And so that's why we find it hard to sort of reconcile that there are no tenants that, you know, you know, establish, you know, good faith, you know, potential tenants that, you know, that you can reach agreement with. It's just hard to.
There are.
I'm happy to share with you all of the occupants that toured and share all the financials we offered. You would be amazed on what we gave. Aside from giving a free per square foot space. You would be amazed, well below market and a paid TI. We work with boutique shops, two breweries. you would be amazed, well below market and a paid TI. We work with boutique shops, two breweries, a coffee component, a French bakery, a clothing shop, a bookstore, and one other. I don't remember the last one, but several different.
Well, I, I don't want to tell you how to, you know, your, your business is your business. We're just the zoning commission here in a small town in Connecticut.
Okay, well, we'll move to, back to the public hearing. Let's see here.
Not a public hearing.
Now, we were in, we were in our public hearing.
Sorry, TJ, we skipped around a little bit to accommodate the late, um, delayed entry, so we skipped back, and then we're going back forward.
Yeah, there's, unlike any, any other area of Simsbury, this doesn't require a public hearing for zone change in the Hartford zone.
All right, so back to where we were on the agenda. Application 2202, Lisa Hamel. I understand that one's been postponed by the applicant. So the public hearing will be postponed. It is open until 4:13, so we'll just do it at the next meeting.
Correct.
All right, application 2201 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission applicant Laura Markowski, agent, application for text amendment to sections 3.4, 3.5, 4.6, and 8.6 of the zoning regulations. Amendment for the purpose of the addition to alcohol use in the regulations per submitted. Laura, you want to go over that for us?
Sure. This is the exact same thing that we discussed last time. It's, no changes have been made to the memo that was previously provided. It's just allowing the use under the home-based business and allowing it by special exception in zoning districts. We found out last time, there was a little hiccup about alcohol use. We moved the section around, put it into the special section, so that way it wasn't just under business districts.
Anybody have any questions on this? It wasn't the package.
This is 2201.
Yeah. Laura, can you just put up the, the little section that shows what's now allowed in the residential area, the text of it?
Sure. Bear with me one second. See, Tom, I should have let you do this. You had such luck before.
And I'm usually the worst when it comes to shared screens.
No pressure, Laura.
Thanks, Kevin. See, the problem is, is when you share the screen, but you're also live streaming.
Yeah, you got a lot going on.
Would it be easier if one of us shared it?
If you would like to, if you have it up, you absolutely can, and I would be very grateful.
Which one, which one am I opening?
It's application 2201, and it's the memo to the zoning commission. It's lower down in the bottom.
Yep, okay, 10:03 AM. I think so. Here. Which one? This one, I believe. This one we're talking about?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make it bigger.
Thank you, Diane.
No problem. I do a lot of Zoom calls. So do we want to start from the top, or do you just want to look to the parts that are changed?
Oh, yeah, it's only the blue parts that are different.
Yep.
Okay. Oops. There, can you see? Okay?
Yeah, so the addition was section L here, right?
Correct.
I don't know. We need to read it to everybody.
That's out of a state regulation, all right.
I'm sorry, Bruce, what was that?
That's off of state regulations, isn't it?
Correct. We took the state statutory guidelines. We threw it right in our zoning regulations.
Yeah, okay. I recognized it from our gift basket person zone.
Diane, can you go down to the next one, too?
Well, can I just ask a quick question on that one?
Sure.
So that doesn't exclude selling out of the house or the business, right? It just means that you can ship.
Correct. That does exclude. You cannot sell it from your home. You can ship.
So you can only ship?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
That, that's not intended to be here. That's somewhere else. You know?
Well, this, yeah, this is residential zone.
All right, so then which, where else do you want me to bring it down to? Here?
Here, yeah.
Okay, I can, I made it big, so I'll have to scroll. So tell me when you want me to go farther.
So this is still a special exception?
It is still a special exception. We took our alcohol uses out of the business districts, and we put it into the special regulations. So that way it is applicable in all districts instead of just in the business district by a special exception.
So there, what I didn't get to is, are there provisions here that weren't, when this text was referred to as section 4.6, how much difference was there between that and this?
The only difference, I believe, if you continue scrolling down, is the last line. The shipping alcohol gift basket, that sentence.
That's new.
That is new.
And the rest used to be called 4.6.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody have any more questions on this?
Fair cut. Nice job, Laura.
Yeah.
Can you queue up the next one, too, Laura? Diane?
Sure. Where am I going next?
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing then, if we're gonna move on?
So just, no one else has any comments on this? Anybody from the public have any comments on this? No. Then the motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
All right, Jackie?
I'll second it.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. All right, so the public hearing's closed on 2201. And the next one is public hearing on application 2204 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission applicant Laura Markowski, agent applicant, application for a text amendment to section 4.5 of the zoning regulations. Amendment for the purpose of the addition of medical offices and clinics as a use per regulations submitted. All right, Laura, Diane, you gonna bring that one up, too?
Sure, sure.
Diane, you're hired.
I get paid for this, right? Sure. All right, so yeah, what am I bringing up now? Which one?
2204.
Yeah, but which, which document?
It's the memo again.
Memo to town. Okay, there's two that say memo. I just want to make sure I bring up the right one. The second to the last or the last? Hang on. You tell me. You want me to bring up this memo or this memo?
I think it's the last one. I don't know.
No.
No.
Not the memorandum to the town clerk. It's the other one. This one's also pretty, a simple one. It's actually just cleaning up of some of our language and our.
So it's probably under the application one.
There you go.
Okay.
All this did was add a line to blue.
Correct. Was it Scandon in black and white? It's the very last line, I believe, right?
Yeah.
The underlined.
SP, 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 so.
And I'll just, just show you the header. Just, oh, yeah, it's got the same header, so it's good.
So this would allow medical offices in any of the business zones?
Correct, by a site plan approval.
Yeah, by a site plan.
This is just making it consistent with some of the other regulations and definitions that we had in. Originally, I think there is, um, we've been calling it professional offices over the years. But since we define medical offices and clinics, we wanted to just kind of make it consistent throughout the zoning regulations.
Yeah, because I thought we had already allowed this.
I think we've been doing it under, pretty much under professional offices, but I did realize that we had a definition. And since we already have a definition for these, I wanted to make sure it was included on the use table.
Oh. Yeah, all right. Maybe I'll save this question. I'm, I'm interested, as we talk about the Hartford code, who's making sure that the Hartford code, you know, the uses in the Hartford code are consistent with the definitions for the use in the town regulations? Anybody looking at that?
I think that's something we should not be talking about in this.
Well, we need to talk about it at some point, Jackie, because I brought it up before, and I think no one's working on it.
Okay.
It's not getting attention.
Could we add it to the next meeting agenda?
Well, I don't know. I don't.
This requires public hearing. Anytime you change the regs, I mean. Public hearings.
Okay. But moving on.
Yeah, you're right. We should do that. And, you know, then the town center zone, too, if it requires.
That's right. Yeah.
And I would like you also to realize that we are without a captain on the ship. We are down a staff member that would be focused on these things.
Well, I don't know. That thing's been sort of hanging out there as an issue for some time. I'm not suggesting you're not adequately staffed, but we could hire consultants. We could hire an attorney to review this stuff.
We're without a town planner at this point in time. Just be aware of that. And as we go forward, yes, that should be brought up and.
Well, thank you for sharing. I appreciate that. I didn't forget that Mike's gone.
I understand that.
Okay.
I was pointing out that, that's maybe something to consider as we move forward.
We do consider that.
So do we need to close this?
Well, anybody else have a comment on this? Are we ready to close it?
No.
The public hearing?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, thank you. In a second.
I'll second.
Jackie's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, deliberations and actions. Application 2127, that's 250 Hot Meadow Street. Any more discussion on this one? Are we ready for a motion?
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
There was not a staff motion compared to.
No.
Yeah.
You sure it wasn't on the last page?
Yeah, I thought there was.
Yeah, I thought there was, yeah. That's why I was just.
Read it.
Yeah, there's one.
I don't seem to have it.
I can read it. Got it.
All right, you know, you can put it up on the screen again.
Sure. I know. You guys get a little greedy here.
Yeah, okay, that's a quick.
There it is. Wait, motion, sorry, motion. There.
Okay, and procedurally, those that are opposed to the motion, we would actually propose this as a positive motion, and then you would either vote yes or no.
So the motion is to approve.
Yeah, so you would motion to approve, and then the vote will decide whether it's up or down.
You want me to make the motion?
Sure, who was that?
Jackie.
Jackie, okay.
I'm going to try to read it.
Can you, I don't know if I can make it in dark. I could probably make it a little bigger.
That's good. Um, oh.
Yeah.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve application 21-27 of SL Simsbury LLC, applicant TJ Donahue Jr., Killian and Donahue LLC, agent, type three application pursuant to the Hartford Form Base Code related to changing the commercial zone to residential and constructing a 15-unit residential building on the property located at 250 Hot Meadow Street, Assessors Map F17, Block 154, Lot 00 dash 3 dash 2, Zone HS-FBC. Do I say the last part? The approval of the type three application is subject to the following conditions of approval. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction. And two, the commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to the approved plans such as landscaping, grading, et cetera. Said changes are to be made in writing to staff and approved prior to implementation.
Okay, do we have any more discussion on this? We kind of discussed it.
Well, I think that's.
I'm sorry. Did we have a second, just to make sure we?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it was Bob seconded there. Donna?
I think that the, the presentation and inquiries got tangled with, as it were, on with the questions and comments related to the larger issues. And namely, the zone change as well as the history. I don't have anything else to bring up.
I would just add that, you know, I, I don't want, I don't want to come across, I mean, I know that there are a lot of people who are concerned, in the town, who are concerned about, you know, the development and what is done to the ridge line. It's a beautiful development. I have, I have no issue with it, but I, I and, and I don't want, you know, this to come across as this is something that we don't value them as, as a partner with the town, but I do think that it's not unreasonable to ask them to stand by the agreement that we had when we approved the development in the first place.
I totally agree.
I would, I would agree with you, Diane.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay.
Well, let me just point out, so people don't forget, we're not standing by the agreement that was initially made. We're standing by the amended agreement where they have 19 more residential units in that complex now than because of the change we authorized versus when it was originally started and approved. It's 19 more units. I don't know how many more beds there are in bedrooms. I'm not tuned into that kind of detail, but they have a better configuration because they requested it. And we felt good about it. We didn't have to change the zone.
Yeah, I think we have been very cooperative. But, you know, this was one of the key things was that we wanted some commercial in that, in that property.
Right.
You know, I, I think that with all due respect, we need to look out for the best interest of the town and not necessarily the best interest of the developer, no matter how much that developer contributes to the town.
It's a balance.
It is a balance.
Yep.
Well, then we'll go to vote. All in favor?
I, oh, excuse me. Do you want the yeses first and then the no's?
Could we just, can we clarify the vote?
Yeah. Yeah, because it's a, it's a positive motion, so if you want to vote against it, you don't vote yea, you vote nay.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, all in favor?
Nay.
Zero. All opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay, whatever.
Zero to six. All right, it fails. The motion fails. Okay, next application, 21, that one we're skipping. 2203, 34 Farms Village Road.
Mr. Chair, there is one thing that should be noted on this application. It did go to DRB and receive a positive referral tonight with the one special exception that the press box is a dark blue.
More, uh, the, more the color blue of the, that it is now for the home team color blue for the press box.
Simsbury blue.
Yeah.
Simsbury blue.
Well put, well put.
Okay, but they did, they were favorable. All right, observation was favorable, and ZBA was all favorable.
Correct.
Right. And Diane has a motion there that she's just anxious to read.
Diane, too. All right, I'll make it a little bigger. Okay, um, uh, making a motion to approve application number 22-03 of Simsbury Public Schools. Care of Jason Casey, applicant, SLR International Corporate. Chair Jason Casey, applicant SLR International Corporation agent, for special exceptions in site plan amendment pursuant to section 3.4 and 6 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for development in the floodplain related to the reconstruction of the existing grandstand and press box for the property located at 34 Farms Village Road, Assessors Map F11, Block 148, Lot 016, Zone R40. Special exception approval is subject to the following condition. Special exception is not valid until notice of grant is filled with the, or filed with the Simsbury Town Clerk. Site development is subject to the following conditions, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction. The commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to the approved plans such as landscaping, grading, et cetera. Said changes are to be made in writing to staff and approved prior to implementation. Do I need to make mention of the Simsbury blue?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes, and then, um, also, the per design review board recommendations, the press box should be darker Simsbury blue in color.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
Donna seconded it. Any discussion on this?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, um, all in favor? Aye.
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 And all opposed? No, so again, six, zero in favor? A, application 2202, by the applicant, so 2129, short-term rentals text amendment. This is the one we had the public hearing back in January 3rd.
This one, we're, are we just looking at the letter that's being sent to the, no?
This is the short-term rentals, it's not the accessory dwelling units. I know it got confusing because they happened around the same time.
Gotcha, 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 thanks.
This was just our enabling, we have to allow the short-term rentals in, in all the zones. So that the town ordinance can, can then allow them. But, you know, they can't allow if we don't allow them under zoning, so we need to make the condition.
Gotcha.
Are you gonna bring it up?
I don't know if there's a staff one for this, unless it's this, this PDF, hold on. Oh, that's just the documentation, yeah, okay, I just, hang on, I'll share it again. This guy?
Yep, just shows the last line that showed that short-term rentals are permitted. They're in the, well, shows them all, right, the, the one above that should have been residential.
That's business permitted and then industrial permitted and residential.
Okay.
So we don't have to make?
So was it S, what was it, zoning permit in, in the business area?
Yeah, for business, it's special permit, and industrial, it's special permit.
Okay, but in a residential, it's, it's, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's special permit.
Site plan.
Sorry, 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 site plan.
So we don't have to make a motion?
Well.
Yeah, we do need to make a motion to make, to.
The short-term rentals, though, I think we need to make a distinction that SP here and the SP above are not the same thing. The SP for short-term rentals is being issued by the Board of, the Board of Selectmen delegated to, or the first, the town manager delegated to the planning director that we don't have. Somebody is issuing a permit, it's not the same one that comes from our process. Or am I mistaken? I don't know, I assume that it was a different permit, it's gonna look different, it's gonna have regular renewals and costs and stuff that.
It's governed by the ordinance, the actual permit approval for it. This is just to allow the use in residential, it's okay, it's an allowed use. When you started getting into your industrial and your business, I believe you were requiring a site plan, just to make sure was it appropriate place for it and a location for it. That would be a different permit, that would be, the site plan would be before you, just the okay would be the zoning ordinance, or the, uh, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen ordinance.
So this is just an allowed use?
It's allowing the use.
Right.
Great. So we have to make a motion?
We do, because we're changing our regs.
For the text amendment.
Someone want to make a motion just to approve these changes?
I am. I will make a motion to approve application 2129 for short-term rentals text amendment.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Could we just set an effective date with that of March 1, 2022?
Sure.
Sure.
Works for us.
Thank you.
Effective March 1, 22.
Okay, um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Nay, six, zero. Okay, next application is the application 2201, read the alcohol use text amendment. We just looked at that, so I don't know that we necessarily have to pull that one back up again. Anybody want to make a motion there?
Sure.
All right, Jackie.
Uh, make a motion to approve application 22-01 for alcohol use text amendment.
Okay, uh, second?
I'll second it.
And seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the same thing with the effective date is March 1, 22.
Amend that to have the effective date of March 1st, 2022.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero, so that's approved six, zero, and then the last one is application 2204. And again, we just looked at that, so who wants to make that motion? And you want to make that motion? Get everybody in the process, then.
I guess I do. Um, I make a motion to, you're gonna have to help me out with this, application 2204, um, to, to amend for the purpose of the addition of medical offices and clinics for the use as a use per regulation submitted.
Right, effective March 1st, 22.
Effective March 1st, 2022.
All right, anybody got any comments on this? Oh, wait, wait, a second then.
Well done. That's what I thought.
All right, Bruce, you're making a second?
There you go, sure, yeah. I seconded it.
All right, nice job. Um, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, approved six, zero. Um, any general commission business? Anything from the staff?
I do have a question. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Laura, go ahead.
No, after you, it's fine.
Oh, I'm just curious, remember, Kevin, before the holidays, you mentioned us perhaps re-examining the Terracil Village Code, and I'm just wondering if that's something we could throw on the amend, uh, the agenda at some point, and just kind of, I don't know.
I'd like to see if we have any money from either Laura or.
I'm going to make a request that we can, I, I'm sorry, to wait until we have a town planner, and then we have to bring it back up again.
Absolutely, yeah.
Moment, but I will make a note of it, I have an ever-growing list of things that I get to bring up with the lucky person who takes over.
That's fine, thanks.
There are often the applicants with all the stuff we got.
They don't watch the meetings, that's okay.
We can't wait. Lots of work.
Oh, here's another one for you to put on your list, Laura.
Okay.
I've spoken to Mike about this a couple times and nothing's happened. The zoning regulations that I looked at on the town website today are dated for last year, November 2020.
I thought we argued.
Well, if you did, and I'm, I'm, I, you know, bravo if you did, but you need to get it on the town website.
Yeah, because I thought, Laura, the last time we looked at it, it had the new picture on the front as well.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I thought it was November 2021, and I don't know that we.
It's really a moot point, the fact is, we just made a bunch of changes in the zoning.
We're gonna update them one way or another, but I will definitely make sure the new ones get up there.
Sooner would be better than later. I've also requested repeatedly that we get the, uh, we don't refer to them as bylaws, but the zoning commission rules of practice and whatever we call it, those need to be returned to our homepage on the town website. Somehow they disappeared. And every time I look at the planning commission, I see theirs, and I see the Board of Selectmen, and I see theirs, and I see ours are missing and just can't seem to find their way back. I'd like to see that taken care of at some point. And if it just has to go on your list, well.
Yeah, that's fair.
Better than not being on in somebody's list, I guess.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Where, where do we stand on the ADU thing? Is that gonna be March?
Just about to say, we're trying to schedule a special zoning commission meeting on the 28th to just go over the sign regulations and the accessory dwelling unit memo to the Board of Selectmen. And I wanted to see everyone's availability, I'm trying to secure that I have a room for that day, um, but, or a Zoom channel, more aptly put, but it should be fine. I don't know if everyone's going to be available.
What was the date again, I'm sorry?
It's the 28th of February, so it's been, uh, two weeks from today.
It may not be, I'm not sure, I may be, because I'll be, I may be coming home, so I'm not sure what our travel date's gonna be.
That would ordinarily be a regular meeting, right?
That would, except for those two meetings, not, we only have one meeting in January and only one in February. Otherwise, it would be your normal meeting time, it's.
So that would be the fourth one day.
Yeah, it would normally be the 21st, which is President's Day.
Oh, that's why, thank you, my mistake, I knew there was a holiday somewhere.
That wasn't our regular meeting day.
No, it was the week after.
Okay.
I can do the 28th.
Okay, I could, too.
I can.
And I know Chairman Ryan can, so that would be a form, I believe.
And did we hear from Ann, is she still there?
I, I, I said I'm here.
Yeah, she said, yes.
Not all people are showing up on my screen, so I can't see it.
I will go ahead and get the agenda for that and send that out immediately.
Okay, great. You had any luck doing further research on how, when we actually did our first ADU-type regulation? No, huh?
I still have it listed as that, it's the first time that I see it formally listed as an accessory structure in the zoning regulations, I'm sorry, I don't have that date off the top of my head. But I do have the text amendment, I can make sure that's uploaded, if you'd like to see it.
Well, let's just be clear about something else, though, you're not doing anything more on this, Laura. What you did, you did, you're not doing any more research. Because I'll do some, but I don't want to do what you're doing.
Well, I don't want to do what you're doing either, we shouldn't double it, right?
Well, I'm not getting paid for it, I'm a volunteer, and so I have strict limitations on what I volunteer to do.
Um, as far, no, I haven't really had much of an opportunity to work on it any further, all of the information is already.
Your intention is not towards, not on your list.
You really like this list idea, Bruce.
No, I don't, actually, but, you know, it is what it is.
If he came into, uh, the town hall, would he be able to, you said we had copies?
The town clerk would have to give me the, the old zoning regulations.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as zoning regulations, I, I know we looked through the ones previous to it, I believe, uh, your chairman also looked through the zoning regulations previous and couldn't find anything. He was in town hall looking around.
Oh.
Oh, good.
So, me personally, no, I haven't done all that much further on it.
Yeah, oh, that's okay, I'm not telling you how to do your job, I just want to not do what you're doing.
Very fair.
Okay. All right, anybody else? That will entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
I'll go with Jackie.
Okay.
Thank you for being our chairman, thank you Laura and Tom.
Yeah, welcome back. It's great to have you back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of a journey?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay, zero, six to zero once again.